Welcome. Wow, this is the most people we've had in a year. Okay, so first up, we have examining the meeting minutes of January 25th, 2021. We are being recorded twice. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 25th, 2021 as written. Any discussion? All in favor? I, motion carries. Okay, so I signed this one. Yeah, that one said he was, the other two he says not. Alright, so I'd make a motion to table items B and C until Eric is here for next meeting. Is there a second? We're all done with that, yeah, we can pass it on to her. Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, so. My gosh, Joanne, oh, there you go. Okay, so we've got, next up. Review and take action on FY20 contract between town and Executive Office of Elder Affairs for $22,500 for outreach services provided through the Southern Hilltown Consortium. So this is the one that we're sort of redoing because. Alright. My computer keeps saying. So Josh, explain that we're redoing this because, will you remind me?
So. The off, this is, this is actually our reimbursement amount for an existing contract period that we're no longer that. The state, although. I guess. With COVID and available staffing and whatnot. So but there, for us to get to reimburse the $22,500 based on a contract that we now have to kind of re-approve then re-sign, that's what that is. It's a little frustrating.
Yeah.
But that's the reality that we're dealing with.
Thank you. Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the contract between town and Executive Office of Elder Affairs for $22,500 for outreach services provided through Southern Hilltown Consortium. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Let's start a pile here, Joanne. Okay, next up, we've got review and take action on the special town meeting warrant. Okay. So this is the same warrant, just with a new date, correct?
Article six. I mean, it's no biggie anyway, but yeah, this, it's just a good mistake because special town meeting that.
Okay.
Passed around, it looks like March 22. Is the rescheduled date? We just gotta know we posted.
Why am I not seeing, oh, there's the date, okay, Monday, March 22nd. Okay. I don't know, do I have one to sign or no? Maybe Tom has one. Because I have one digitally. Do you have one for me to sign? The warrant, it's probably this giant packet, there it is. So nothing else changes and we still.
Seventy-seven oh-two, Article six.
Okay.
It's forty, it's a change, either way.
So it's reduced by about thirty bucks?
Yeah, it's very minor.
Okay, we can change it on the floor then. I'm not seeing a spot to sign that though. On the back, there's not, unless you have one with a signature. So I would make a motion to approve the new special town meeting warrant for March 22nd. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? So whenever you get that, Josh will sign it and get it up. Alright, we have received communication from EverSource on its transmission vegetation management plan. So EverSource is sending us more stuff to read. I love it, it's always so long. I see green communities historical, no, that's not it. It's not that. Oh, gosh, yeah. So this is something we receive on a yearly basis, I think it's just an update. On what they're doing. Regarding vegetation maintenance activities. Thank you, TJ, I know there is a reason we keep you around. Alright, so this is. I guess the ma, I'm not really sure what to make of the map, but hold on. It's just they're removing toggling trees from the right of way and cutting branches, extending the right of way, branches, trees, post series, blah, blah, blah. Vegetation too close in contact with electric facilities being removed. So it's not going to interrupt service and it's typically 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Saturday. We do not have a specific date or time.
So just so you're, just, just like anything else, I get.
Yeah.
Like this from people who have businesses in town and when it comes to my desk, I.
Yeah, absolutely.
Communication purposes so that.
And Rainey has a.
It's there, it's posted, people get to review it on the public record, in case they have any questions or want to know what the vegetation.
What's going on?
Like, there's nothing really to discuss. All it is is just.
Thank you, TJ. Does Rainey have a copy?
No, I can make sure.
Yeah. You want mine?
This one's to your attention, I can't, Carol is under.
Thank you. Do you need us to, you don't need us to. It might be easier. Okay. Alright, next up, we've got review and take action on the contract, oh, thank you. Between the town and Mass Cultural Council for FY21 grants fund of $4,800. Let's see.
The local cultural council get this every year.
Yes.
Cultural council grant program, this is what funds the concert series that has taken place in the past. I don't know what's happened this year, but I did say that. We've gotten this every year in the past, but like every other contract, they need to be signed by the chief executive in the area.
Are they still meeting, do you know, the cultural council?
They have one coming up this week.
Oh, good. It's gotta be tough putting together stuff right now. They usually do those awesome painting things. Hopefully they'll be able to get some stuff. They have Eric down as select board chair, but I'm not sure if that's going to make a difference here when I sign up. Did we make a motion yet, Joanne? So motion to approve the contract between town and the Mass Cultural Council for FY21, local cultural council grant, $4,800. Any discussion? All in favor? Eight, four, eight, four, two, seven, nine. I think you have to sign this one too. This first day of March. That means that spring is coming. New day now. Alright, um, next up. So we have communication from the Department of Transportation regarding anticipated Chapter 90, a portionment for fiscal FY21 of $257,072. Do you know if that's what Rainey was expecting, is that?
A little more than we got this year. This year was 257. Actually. This year was 257, 687.
Is Rainey on there? Rainey with us? Just curious if it was, yeah, if it was what he was expecting or if it's going to be a. So. We don't need a motion there, we're just receiving it. Okay. So last week, we talked about the electrical permit fee rate changes. And so we have those now. We took a look at what they were. Here. So the rates that we see in front of us are the ones that he presented last week, correct? I don't think there's any changes, yeah. So he's looking at increasing our rates, aligning them with Russell and some other surrounding towns. Chester.
Is that the directive? At the last board meeting, you wanted us to put it up for two weeks.
Yep. Did we get any response?
I had, I didn't get any response. Joanne, did you get any email or phone calls? On the proposed rates for electrical?
No, he was just saying, so last week, when the electrical inspector proposed the new rates, Eric mentioned that we should post them so for transparency reasons and let anyone comment, but we haven't received any comments. Okay, that's okay. No, it's hard to hear with the heat of the ground. Thank you for your honesty. I'll try to be more engaging. Questions on that, Tom, and all, are you good? Did you hear any scuttle?
No.
We're good, okay.
Usually I do.
Usually you do, so that, that's good. No news is good news. So we'll make a motion to approve the proposed electrical permit fee rate changes as written. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Alright, look at us speeding through here. Now we've got the contract between the town and Pioneer Valley Planning for dispersment and use of emergency COVID-19 funding. Made available through Commonwealth of Maps Public Health Trust, so let's see. Do I have a total, oh, no, this is it here? Yeah.
We hear from the Board of Health.
Yes, we're going to talk to the Board of Health on our COVID-19 update. Do you? Hold on, let me just read this. So this is came through the Board of Health and Josh. So we've got some additional funding.
Right, so you remember earlier in the year, we got some funding through the, I think through the Mass Department of Public Health, was it? It was like four or five thousand, same amount, right?
Yeah, like five thousand something.
Yeah. I remember that.
So it looks like here they're.
Okay. So it's the contract amendment to provide another installment of funding to support public health-related work in our community. Please sign it. You want this money, is what you're telling me. Total contract will not exceed $5,866. Alright, so I would make a motion to approve the contract amendment between the town and Pioneer Valley Planning for dispersment and use of emergency COVID-19 funding. Any discussion? All in favor? The Board of Health, welcome. You guys want to give us a COVID-19 update?
I think I do a recap.
Okay.
February 17. We are all set to go with our vaccine clinic. And the only thing we had to do was get the check out, which Josh got for us on that day, send it out, get our free, it's the only thing we were waiting.
Yep.
And on February 18th, we received a letter from Sudders from the State Office saying that they're no longer going to provide vaccines to small communities. And I think you got my email, which is very frustrating, upsetting.
Yes, you guys put a lot of work into it, I know. Yep.
So now we're all.
Okay. You're all good. I'm so sorry, thank you guys so much for trying anyways. I know you put a lot of energy and time into it.
Our freezer, refrigerator are actually going to be delivered tomorrow.
Okay.
And we are going to move forward in the sense of, we're going to put other things in place that will help the community in the long run.
Okay.
So they happen, and that's not for tonight's discussion.
Okay. I saw that you had something about sharing with other communities, is that, that that was an option, is that?
That's what they're saying, is that you can, they want, if we have all the small communities together.
Yeah.
They are only going to do mass production.
Yeah.
And I think even if we get, you know, together, covering, you know, all this stuff, it's not going to be enough.
Okay.
They want the large, in bam 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 bam.
Yeah. That sounds more, go ahead, sorry. I was just going to say, that sounds more like a Huntington Health Center collaboration than maybe our small Board of Health.
Yeah, I don't know how to do it. I know it has started to affect certain.
Yeah.
Places, some of the Walgreens are going to shut, get shut down, and CVSes, there's going to be a lot. Because you have to have, they started out where you had to produce under vaccines, and then it went to 200, and then they upped it to 700 per day, five days.
Wow, yeah.
So that's an awful lot to do.
Yeah.
Just know.
Yeah.
What they are offering is, of course, the two-in-one, but then there's a lot of restrictions on the two-in-one, that's only 60 yards and older.
Yeah.
And there's a whole, that's just a whole other thing that doesn't help everybody. So they're trying to get together a. Thing in a boot truck, like it's a motorbike vaccine truck, that will go around and they get, they're going to try and hit some of the smaller towns. It's not organized yet, it's just been out there, they say they're going to do it, and the way that the state's been running is, they'll let you know when, you know, if already started.
Okay.
So we're just really waiting for more direction on that.
Okay.
To know, you know, who's going to go, where they're going to go first, or, you know, where we would be in the rotation, and they just probably months a month, or if it's one job deal, I have no details.
So we're currently, any word on when we're moving to the next phase as far as vaccine distribution goes? Like who can get the vaccine, do we know yet?
The vaccine, we are not moving in any other phases except for people who aren't getting ready to get their second shots.
Okay.
Are still up for their second shot and 65.
Okay.
And we're still like.
We're still there, okay.
We did move into phase two.
Yeah.
And what we could open and do, and how many people were about it.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Government.
Yes, and the administration does not need to.
I knew it didn't. My concern, my concern was if that, that going in the paper, people might, you know, misconstrue that and think that it was the select board that was stopping the vaccine, and I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that it wasn't us, that it was other government officials. Pass the blame.
No, not you guys, you guys are the right.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
Before you go into other new business, I was going to ask, your table items, specifically.
Oh, table item C. Yep.
We have the.
Perfect, yeah, okay. So make a motion to go to table item C, review draft host community agreement between town and Putting Hill Farm LLC. Is there a second? Alright, all in favor? Guys, welcome. Carolis Hender, I'm the, the chair of the select board. Nice to meet you. I did, I know, I didn't meet them, I wasn't here the day that you guys, no, I wasn't here that day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was playing hooky. Don't try to make me feel bad.
So at the last meeting, you guys were, or you weren't here, but there, well, actually, the last meeting that you were here.
Yeah.
Were reviewing the.
Yes.
Revised host community agreement. And there was a directive from the board to get a preliminary plan of some kind.
Yeah.
So that's where we are. So packets, there's a one pager of the preliminary plan, followed by the revised draft host community agreement. And they're here tonight to answer any questions you might have regarding.
Okay. I wish that Eric was here because he was the one that had most of the questions. So I know that we had looked at the host community agreement and two of the adjustments in the agreement, one was taking out the community. Well, reducing the impact fee and then the required community. Yeah. And so your argument being that you were just a small-scale little business and did not sort of that large scale that we were going to be looking at, that 3%. So you wanted to be looking at, you wanted to talk about the 1% and then reducing the time to, was it two or three years, and then we would revisit at that point? Okay, so Eric had asked, he wanted to take a look at your business plan, and it looks like you're looking at an expected net of $30,000 annually. Which is pretty drastically different than the other plans we've been looking at.
They told us they were going to be a small business when they came in here.
Yeah.
That's about as small as you can get.
Yeah.
Any problem with it, you've already old paid our dues.
Yeah.
Did you guys, I don't know how to. Do anything as far as aggravation does. I can't see it.
And the 1% is on top of the taxes that are paid to the town. I mean, I'm all for, you know, supporting small businesses and welcoming you to town because we want you to be here. You know, I, I really don't have many questions because it was Eric that had all the questions. So I personally don't really have a problem with the community host agreement at the 1%. I like the idea of visiting it earlier to see how things are going and if we want to adjust anything. You know, if it takes off and you're doing amazing, you want to look at doing the community piece, being able to do some sort of a donation, then that's great. Do you have questions for us right off the bat? Oh, they're amazing, yeah, thank you. They're such an amazing volunteer group. Yeah, thank you, yeah. Um.
Maybe an unspecified dollar of the charitable contribution.
Leave a blank, and then that you can do the fire department?
Contribute to public local nonprofit in the town, but take out an amount no less than. And in that way.
So Josh is suggesting we leave in those terms about a charitable contribution to the town and then just take out any amount? And then if you decide to donate to the fire department, then in whatever amount you can.
So the charitable contribution is in their discretion, so let's say you were to do, I think the last, I would say 5% or 3%.
I think it was $3,000 in the last one we did.
It was like 5,000, I think.
Okay, something like that for you. Yeah.
This year leaves it to their discretion, the amount and the charitable organization among the volunteers.
Yeah, as long as it's in town.
Local charities not taught in the town yet.
What do you think of that, Tom?
It doesn't tie them to an amount or they'll have a flexibility to donate where they want to.
What do you guys think of that, does that sound?
Be a hundred bucks, be a hundred thousand bucks.
Somewhere between, yeah. Do we have the host community grant?
Yeah. Oh, red line, or.
I don't think I have a copy to sign, you might have a copy.
I don't have a clean version, but if you just.
And our. Attorneys have taken a look over it.
Yep.
And they've advised us that whatever we decide for those two.
The discretion's up to you.
Yeah.
And really, the biggie here, what is the charitable, the percentage of the community impact fee? We started with 3%, we can only negotiate up to 3%, they came back with a 1%, arguing being a small micro business.
But instead of revisiting after five years, it would be.
And then the term running, so instead of five years, it'll be three years.
Do you want me to reach out to?
Those are the key things.
Do you want me to reach out to Eric and see if he has any more questions, or are we just going to? Alright, let me see if he's there. Big bad Eric. He's not on Zoom with us, huh? I have three phone numbers for Eric, I never know which one to call. He's got a flip phone, he's got like all these, it's like. His burner phone. You do the 5151? Okay, I'll share that one. Oh, you're calling too? Hi, is Eric available?
Hello?
Hi, this is Cara, I just had, we're at the select board meeting, and I just wanted to see if he wanted to weigh in on a topic that we're discussing right now before we vote on it.
Hey, you're welcome, Jen.
Okay. Phone's really heavy.
What's going on?
Hey, Eric, um, we have the gentleman in front of us from Putting Hill, and we, I don't know if you saw in your email, we did receive the business plan from them. So they're looking, they're looking at an annual net of $30,000. So having seen this and read this over, Tom and I are okay with going with the 1% revisiting it three years, and I wasn't sure if you had any questions for them before we go forward with that.
Nope.
Really? Alright.
I would say revisit it a hundred thousand, but, you know, whatever, 30,000, not now, we're getting it, you know, terror over.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and approve it then, thank you. You're going to run for selectmen again, right? You said that? You said you're going to run again at the caucus, I should nominate you?
Well, you can nominate me, but there are circumstances.
Thanks, Eric, have a good one. Bye. Okay, so I would make, um, can I prove it as is? Can I make a motion to approve the host community agreement now, or do we need to touch it up first? Can I approve it with amendments?
Yeah, for a little bit of amendments.
Okay.
The, the one that you have as is strikes out.
Okay.
Everything that has to do with charitable contribution. So I think. Everything that has to do with charitable contribution, so I think.
Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the host community agreement, um, between the town of Blandford and Pudding Hill Farm LLC with the amendments. Which include the, um, adjustment to the charitable contribution.
Oh, sure.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Congratulations. Awesome, next step. Thank you for, yeah. Um, Josh is gonna print us a new one to sign up. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good one. Nice to meet you guys. Yeah, do, let's do the Shepherd Hill. Sorry, I'm going to new business B. Come on, do you want to come closer, Mick? So I don't have to scream at you? And you don't have to scream at me. Oh, I left my ibuprofen in the car. Hi, Dick.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Shannon Walsh from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. She's their, uh, historical expert.
Hi, Shannon. And then we have, who else do we have up in the other corner?
Mike Hutchins.
Oh, that's Mike. Mike, hi, Mike. Um, okay. Um, so we talked last week about, um, bringing you guys all to the table to talk again about, um, Shepherd Hill. It's like Groundhog Day, deja vu, um, and what our pros and cons are of keeping it or trying to sell it or what can we do with it? Um, I know last time we all met together, we had been looking at trying to substitute some pieces of land to, um, to sort of balance out that conservation land.
If, if the town chooses to separate.
Yeah.
Hopefully take the economically valuable part, the house, the farm, what used to be a little farm.
Yeah.
And try to market that.
Yeah.
Before we even get to that point, it's gonna be, what could we possibly get out of it? What would we have to put into it?
Yeah.
To get it to a point? Is there any alternative for you to do yourselves? And is it the best thing to do?
Yeah.
Then it's gonna be able to address this very quickly. Uh, great new, great program for small towns. We are listed as one of the small towns. And one of the things that they described as change by deal use for the money would be rehabilitation of housing to rural communities to bring in very few large property values to the market. Not necessarily with your house.
Okay.
Folks, hello. Hey, folks, this is Dick. I'm having trouble hearing him. I don't know if Mick can move or can you hear him better?
For a minute? Yeah, thanks, Dick. We'll move the mic. Oh, does that not pick up?
Sorry, sorry.
All right, we'll test it out. Hold on.
How's it, Dick? Is it any better?
That's better, much better. Thank you.
Looking at the microphone.
Much better, thank you.
Uh, a lot of questions before we get to a resolution.
Yeah.
What's the best thing to do with that property? Make it money-making? I don't know. Lease it to somebody, sell it, make it a farm again? Uh, one of the things this grant program is designed to do is maybe do a feasibility study and identify the options. Now, that, that's, it's not automatic. We would have to apply.
Yeah.
And it might be good to have Shannon just briefly describe what she knows about this.
Okay.
It is new. I mean, we don't have answers.
Yeah. Okay.
Could, could I lob in a question before we go there that may be important at this point? Um, do we know if the town was to pro- have proceeds, needs money from any sort of, you know, selling or leasing of the property or are we? I'm not sure the conservation restriction that's on the property would allow us to, to make money from that property, but I'm not sure, but I, I think that's the case.
So the question.
It, it, that may just. So that just may, you know, steer one, one way or another, you know?
Well, if we were to decide to make that our best option, we would have to get the easement removed from the land and buildings that we're talking about. And that's a process.
That's swapping.
That would be swapping other land that is not already designated for open space.
Yeah.
But it has to have the same or better economic value and conservation value.
Do you think that we could work with Springfield and see if they donate something to swap out?
I think whatever decision you make is gonna require a lot of time.
Yeah.
Hours, energy.
I'm just wondering if it has to be a town property or it could be a Springfield water.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be our land.
That's, that's the thing, though.
Whereas we live to release the easement on our land. We'd have to substitute.
Have we read the CR, the, the conservation restriction? Is that?
Yeah.
Are we for sure of that?
Sure of what?
That has to be our land. That we swap.
Um.
I'm just wondering because they own so much land in town and if we are in a position to ask them, which I think we are, to do some things for the good of the town, we might be able to get some property swapped out that way.
Is it possible that they own land in town that's not already designated for some?
Oh, true, that's a good point.
Some purpose?
Yeah, the other factor with that scenario to consider is that if, if, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I, I believe that if we were to convey the, the house and the, and the adjacent property to somebody else, I believe the, the elements of the conservation restriction also would stay with that property.
That's correct.
Uh, not sure, but.
Oh, that's right.
So I don't know.
So whoever bought it, should we get to that point? It's subject to the terms we are.
Okay, so it's gonna be hard to sell.
I mean, yeah, I guess what I, what I might recommend is, you know, I've, um, participated in inspection of property with, uh, the holder of, of the conservation restriction, which is Massachusetts DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, which is a little unique that, that they hold the CR, but they do. Um, and so I, I've developed a, a pretty good relationship with, um, the person that, that manages that, that part of it through DCR. Um, you know, and I, I, I have communicated with her a little bit about different options that we may have for the property, but she's, she seems to be a pretty good resource for us to get answers of what we can and cannot do with property. But, but it's a little, that conservation restriction is, is like fairly different than like the one that's on a middle property. Um, in that it, it came with the property. Um, that, that conservation restriction actually covers about eight different parcels with most of the other parcels still being owned by Springfield Water and Sewer. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a little unique in that the, the conservation restriction, it's like on a property has a lot of specifics and it, that, that the one for the Shepherd Farm does not. Um, but, um, so, I, I mean, I, I just wonder if it, it would be the right thing to do would be to put together a list of different options that we might consider for the property and that I or we or whoever appropriate would be appropriate to go talk to the, to people at DCR and say, these are the things we're considering, what, you know, what's allowable and what isn't or what, you know, what are the ramifications of the different options?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Dick. I think that, um, I think that we're sort of in this position where we've been spinning in circles with it for years now and in my opinion, as a town, I, I don't love the idea of putting any money into the property. Um, and I think that we need to, I think that we need to take some sort of action with it. If there's a grant opportunity, if Shannon, you know, she's gonna talk to us about possible grant opportunities or we can get it fixed up to a point where maybe we can then actually start to, you know, not be losing money. Um, on the situation that I think that, you know, that would be great. But Shannon, do you want to talk to us about, um, the grant opportunities?
Sure, and can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So just to weigh in quickly, because this isn't really my specialty, but it, it was brought to our attention because, um, my colleague in our community development department, we attended this one-stop training, which is a new program through the state that they're trying to make some, some of this, these different programs more streamlined so that when you apply to one, um, it helps, once you get into the system, you're aligned so that you're not missing deadlines for other grants or missing other grants because you're waiting for a grant you applied for already. Um, and this new program that Mick had mentioned, it's called the Rural and Small Town Development Fund and it's a capital grant program and Blandford is one of the municipalities that's eligible for it because of your size. And, um, that's, as, as Mick mentioned, that's what caught my attention, that one of the examples of projects is rehabilitation of housing in a rural community to bring an underutilized property back on the market. And, um, I'm also working on the Resilient Master Plan, the Cultural and Historic Resources Chapter. And I've been hearing through those listening sessions, a lot of talk about housing and agriculture and, and things like that. So the, the way that you kind of get your foot in the door for this program is just, it's a two or three-page online expression of interest form that, um, I had sent to Josh. And so we'd be happy to talk about it through PVPC, not that we would, we could help guide that process initially because it's really not that involved. Um, but it might be an option and I, I hear you, Josh, saying that these things take time, but it seems like a lot of time and effort has already gone into trying to figure out options for this property. Um, so a feasibility study might be, especially if it's a grant that you're not paying additional money for, it might be a good way to really get the best understanding of the current state of the property, um, the options for an Article ninety-seven swap. And it sounds like a lot of the groundwork was already laid for that as well, from what I understand, that, um, some town-owned land was identified. There are just some questions about clear title because of records. So if I, well, the way I understand a co- and I did read the deed and I read the conservation restriction and, and you're right, Dick, saying that there are, um, really does limit current options. I think the deed actually says historic preservation and land, historic and land preservation. But if the conservation restriction was swapped out for, to protect another piece of town-owned property of equal or greater value, then it would open up some possibilities for that small portion, uh, near Otis State Road.
That would be great to get up. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I think a feasibility study sounds like a.
So we'll get some guidance from Shannon on approaching that.
Yeah.
But I think Rick's contact would be very valuable also.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so what do you, what do you think, Tom, of doing a feasibility study on the property to see what?
I think it's gonna be a valuable.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not sure if we can put into it to ever get any of these guys out of it.
Well, that's what this should tell us.
I realize that.
Yeah.
But I still want to say my teeth.
Yeah.
After we've put X amount into it.
I know.
Are we only gonna get our rest of the teeth back coming? And the longer we live in it, so.
Yeah.
The worse it's gonna be.
I know, it's deteriorating. Um, well, I mean, I'd be interested in the feasibility study that would actually look at some realistic, you know?
I'd like to know what could be done with it to either put it on a market or do something with it to benefit the town as a whole with it on a historic register.
Yeah. Cause I feel like we spec- you know, we've speculated about it for so many years and like tried to do our very best with the information we have, but really just don't have enough.
Uh, I have a question. Do, I, I heard, uh, sort of the architectural uniqueness of that house or the historical value, I mean, do, do we, do we know that to be true? Has somebody actually done some sort of an evaluation or an assessment of the house? And is it, I mean, from looking at it from the road, it doesn't look that unique, but maybe it is. But is, is there some document or, or something that we know that somebody's done to? Do we, do we know that to actually, um, make, make a case that it is a house? And is it, I mean, for this unique or historically significant?
Yeah, if I, if I could jump in real quick, because that's actually primarily also what I'm here to talk about. Um, that, that property, from my understanding and from speaking with town historians and also because I started doing some research on Blandford, um, with local technical assistance about a year and a half ago, I think, for the Blandford Historical Commission, that, that property was continuously in the Shepherd family. Um, and it, it's also located in the General Knox Trail Historic Area. And architecturally, I know that a lot has been done to the house to alter it, but, um, primarily the significance is for your local history and because of the family and because it was probably built in the late seventeen hundreds, early eighteen hundreds. So around the time that General Knox, his group actually went down that road. The, Blandford is unique in Massachusetts because it has a very small amount of, you have an abundance of historic buildings and they really are, um, a lot of the architectural features are still there and a lot of them are intact and there's not a lot of infill, infill construction from like the mid to late twentieth century. But Blandford has a very small amount of properties that have actually been inventoried. So you're asking about, is there, is, is this noted down somewhere? Other than in local Blandford histories in your town library, the other place it would be would be the state database through the Massachusetts Historical Commission. It's called MACRIS, the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System. And Blandford has thirteen inventory points, which is in great contrast to a lot of other municipalities that have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of inventory points. Um, so that's something I've been working with the Blandford Historical Commission for the past two years, trying to figure out how to get started. And I know that your town allocated funds for them to try to do some inventory work, which is their charge as a historical commission. And I worked with Janet Strasberg and the rest of the Blandford Historical Commission to try to apply to the state for grant, matching grant funds and to do it within the budget. And the project unfortunately wasn't big enough for the state, which is ironic because, um, you had the money to do it, but they said, it's not big enough. It's only this many property. They, it would have been about a twelve thousand dollar project, matching about six thousand from the state, six thousand from the Blandford Historical Commission budget and the Historical Society. And the other projects that other groups were applying for, for this Massachusetts Survey and Planning Grant, were more like twenty-five thousand dollar projects. So the state said, good idea, but too small. So then they said they might have some, um, what did they call it? Discretionary funds. So I helped Janet and the Historical Commission apply for that. And at, that was last August and at this point, we still haven't heard back. So, um, Shepherd Farm is a priority. It's, would be great to get it documented whether the building stays there or not because it's very locally significant to Blandford. And that is what you're saying, is that, does it say it somewhere, how old it is and what's significant about it? That would go in the state database, which is public information and is something that will be there whether the buildings are there or not.
Thank you. Tom, go ahead.
I heard Saturday that the Historical Society had a meeting and one of their comments was when we moved the fire department out of the fire station, they could use it to store some of their bigger historical items. Well, as far as I'm concerned, that building's not safe enough to store kids' dollhouse. So there's a property over there that's historical, got a beautiful barn. They could put the wagons or whatever they've got. They could make a museum out of it. Maybe down the road, we could open it at certain times. We put a donation box there, we realize a little bit back and it would be a landmark for the town.
So some of the storage from the stuff in the barns there, storing some of the things that are in the barns here, you think?
Yeah.
Well, um.
Excuse me, Josh, have you seen the proposal? Like Shannon said. It's in your packets, and, uh, like Shannon said, to document it and get it in the inventory, whether the building is there or not, I think what, in your packets, there's this LTA proposal.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a proposal in front of you. By next week, Monday, I'll have a, a formal write-up for you to sign it and request the LTA fund from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, which is local technical assistance.
Yeah.
Um, so what Shannon is proposing here is um, using LTA to get it documented, right, uh, Shannon? For Shepherd's Hill Farm?
Yes, well, yeah, and for my, my historic preservation, local technical assistance, it, it's simply a request directly to me. It's a little different from the LTA that comes from other PV, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission departments. Um, so you don't have to fill out any paperwork and it was, it was requested through the Historical Commission, which is also how a lot of my requests come in. And it would offset the cost to do the inventory. Um, decreasing the cost, it would be the LTA funds plus the balance due, which in the contract, I was asked to draft, I think, is six hundred and something.
Six, yeah, six sixty-two.
Yep, so the LTA, it's because, um, you don't, because of your town size and, uh, the lack of planning staff, you're eligible for twenty-two point five hours, so as you see in there, that, that offsets the cost.
The LTA, it's not the same as PVPC LTA?
Correct.
So that comes from the Historical Commission?
Comes directly. I have a certain amount of hours that I'm allocated every fiscal year and, and then it's discretionary. It has to be per project. Um, yeah. So it's a little different then. It won't take away from your eligible LTA from other, from land use or community development.
Okay.
Just so you're aware though, that when it comes to all agreements and contracts, we have to get it on town contract form and it comes to the select board. Um, so I'll get that drafted.
Yeah, sure. I was just, I was asked to submit a draft contract, so however you, you need it to be, if you need it to be in a different format, you could send it to me and then I'll send it to my contract department to look over.
Okay, that works.
The Shepherd's Building inventory.
Perfect. Okay.
But what about the, uh, feasibility study?
So, the feasibility study, we were talking about using, um, grant funds, so applying to that for grants specifically to do a feasibility study to help the town decide what our next step is. Yeah, I would love, I think that's a really great next step. Then we have like a concrete, you know, something to look at and we don't have to just try to brainstorm.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to. It's, it's an online process. Um, and my colleague Ted Harvey and I are trying to figure out how it works, because this is new, but we we're really excited about it, because we have so many municipalities that meet this criteria, that there haven't been grants available for in the past. And, um, what we did for another similar-sized community that is trying to decide if they're going to apply for funds to do a feasibility study on a school, a former school building that's vacant, we drafted a portion of the application, the interest, I think it's expression of interest, and sent it to them and they decided if they wanted to proceed and, and go for it online. So I'm happy to put something together and then send you the packet and you can have it at your next select board meeting to consider. I think it's due by like the middle of April, so it's not, you have time. And even, I, I was told by Chris Dumphy, who did the CDBG grant, that even a feasibility study, because it's a municipally-owned property, is a potential, you know, CDBG
Okay.
way to go about it as well. Um, that's the one good thing about it being a town-owned property, you have options that you wouldn't with a privately-owned building.
So you're saying we could, we could also use some of the funds from that program to do the feasibility?
Possibly. I don't know if it would fit with the current grant, but possibly a future grant, so I, I can talk about that more with him. But before I even brought this, um, sent it to Josh and to the Historical Commission, I wanted to make sure that all the criteria looked like it was a, a good fit and, um, my colleagues said it, it looked like it was, so. Figure it doesn't, if you, if you feel that way, then it doesn't hurt to apply.
Okay, that'd be great. So let's move, if we could move forward with that, both of those things, um, next week we'll revisit um, signing the contract, um, for the LTA and then we can move forward with applying for that. Um, maybe, should we, he do that after the feasibility study or, I think, or is the feasibility study gonna give us that information?
Was that, was that about the land swap?
The feat, uh, Rick, uh, Dick was saying that he had some information, if we had sort of a list of ideas and then he could help tell us what we can and can't do. I think maybe we should wait until the ideas come in the form of a feasibility study and then go there? Does that sound-
Well, that, that probably makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we have our next steps and then, um, where we visit when we have-
Sorry.
About feasibility.
Can I, can I, a question about the property? So, so we're talking about the house in the property adjacent to the house. The whole property is a hundred and thirty-five acres of land. Um, and, you know, sort of what the Conservation Commission has been told that the Historical Commission oversees like the house and the adjacent property and the balance of the property is under the over- the Conservation Commission. I was just, sort of what the Conservation, kind of the Conservation Commission, wondering if anybody knows if that's true? Is that correct? And is, I mean, should we continue to operate like that? Um, and again, that's, that's a, that's a difference from the other properties that the Conservation Commission oversees, that either by deed or through the CR identifies the Conservation Commission as the overseer of the property. This, this CR does not get into that at all. And, you know, we've been issuing hunting permits, um, on the property. Um, historical committee to that at all. It wants to start to develop a trail network on the property, but we were sort of holding because the balance, um, if you have trails, you need a place to park and currently, you know, the only place, just wondering if anybody knows if they're allowed on the side of Route twenty-three? So, I mean, I, I'm just wondering if should we hold and any, you know, like, starting to develop up, um, a trail, such differences or do folks think, should the Conservation Commission start to look into developing a trail network on the property?
So, um, we actually, we gotta, we have to scoot in about a minute, because we have to go, um, start the caucus, uh, which is posted for seven, but I would say to hold off on any trails, um, and, and doing anything new as, um, submit, doing the hunting permits, I would continue, um, as usual with that. Um, it's probably gonna be a while until we have any answers as far as-
If, if I could interject real quickly before you have to go, I would recommend, as I'm seeing in this other town that has a similar situation with a property that's underutilized, perhaps you could form a subcommittee of stakeholders from the Conservation Commission, the Historical Commission, just a small, a small group, so that you could all kind of be on the same page of where everybody's at and, and what is needed and what is allowed and what isn't. And I would also recommend pursuing the Article ninety-seven land swap um, now, because that, that could be something that would determine what your options are, just as much as a feasibility study.
We pursue that, Shannon, I think. It just, there's this general feeling, without really knowing more about this. Maybe it could be my own ignorance, but it, would there be, are we limiting? Cause once, let's say we, we succeed, we, we are able to secure the resources, fix the building up. How do we, you know, like, how do we get rid of it?
Well, I think that's, that's, that's a couple steps down the road, but the Article ninety-seven, if it's even feasible, would, would give you more options. And, and the one last plug I'm gonna make is, um, Hilltown's CDC was brought up to me as another potential partnership, because, because they do, um, things with, with properties like this, that they might be an interesting party to reach out to. So, thank you for your time. Sorry, I took so much time talking.
Thank you. I appreciate your input. Um, okay, so do I, are we to-
Go into recess.
To go into recess, or do we need to come back? Cause the only other thing on our agenda is the expense report, unless you have things.
Um, that's fine. I mean, I guess you could just close.
If you need us to come back, we can come back.
Well, no, I don't. Um, except that you guys will be able to get back on a weekly schedule rather than every other week.
So, I guess.
Yeah, we'll be fine.
Okay, so, um, we are going to, um, what's the word? Adjourn. We're gonna adjourn at seven to go have the caucus. Uh, Mike, am I not seeing you? Yeah?
Thank you, everybody. Sign off.
Aye, thank you.